All right, good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the Missoula County Board of County Commissioners meeting of November 8th, a Thursday. Will you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, one announcement I'd like to make for folks is that you have probably, perhaps, seen the restoration work that's been in progress over on the county courthouse lawn, the Doughboy Memorial for World War I. Folks who lost their lives from Missoula County in World War I, and the restoration has been completed, and we will be rededicating the memorial on Sunday, Veterans' Day, at 11:00 a.m. Any other announcements? So you've probably seen on the agenda, we have three Agenda Action items today, three public hearings. That will be your opportunity to comment on those items, but now's your chance. If there's anything you would like to comment on that is not on today's agenda, feel free to come on up to the microphone. If not, if and when you do testify for one of the public hearings, I would just ask that you, when you come up to the mic, hit the button on the base of the microphone, which will turn the light from red to green, state your name for the record, and try to keep your comments within three minutes or less, if at all possible. And I would also ask, is there anyone here who will be testifying on the B&amp;M Zoo subdivision or Emerald Lakes Estates Phasing Plan Extension? So I guess without objection, when we get to the public hearings, I would like to reorganize the agenda slightly to knock off the two probably shorter items, and that would be the Emerald Lakes Estate Phasing Plan and B&amp;M Zoo Subdivision, beginning with Zoo, if we could, and then the third item will be the Macaulay Meadows Subdivision, which I think is going to take a little more time than the other two items. Our claims of Missoula County received as of October 25th, 2018 to October 31st, 2018 by the Commissioner's Office total $1,203,653.42. A couple other reminders, if you haven't done so already, please silence your cellphones. If you have not signed in in the back when you came into the room, please do so when you leave. That helps us make sure we not only know who's here, but how to spell your name correctly if you testify. When you come up, I mentioned already, make sure the microphone is on. For each public hearing, we will begin with a staff report, followed by a presentation by the applicant or the applicant's representative, followed by public comment, and finally followed by deliberation on the part of the commission. So with that, I will go ahead and open up the public hearing on the B&amp;M Zoo subdivision, and we will begin with a staff report from Casey Drayton.
Casey Drayton here with Community and Planning Services, representing the B&amp;M Zoo Subdivision, intent to file the final plat for Phase 1 hearing. This is a request by B&amp;M Zoo LLC, represented by Territorial Landworks. We have Paul Forsting here with us today with territorial. The B&amp;M subdivision was a subdivision that was approved on January 11th, 2018, for preliminary plat approval by the Board of County Commissioners. This is a major subdivision located out in the Blue Mountain area. It's located just off Blue Mountain Road, generally speaking, north of the Peak facility that's out at the corner of Highway 93 and Blue Mountain Road. The subdivision was approved with 19 lots over the course of two phases, as mentioned back in January. The shot on the screen there is of the phasing plan, so everything in green is going to be part of Phase 1, and the pink would represent Phase 2. And as mentioned, we went through preliminary plat approval previously. We're here today for a public hearing, which is required of phased developments now, and then after today's hearing, with consent to move forward, the applicant would then bring a final plat submittal forward to appropriate county agencies before filing the final plat and actually having saleable lots out there on site. This is a shot of what the Phase 1 final plat will be looking like when it does come in, depicting those lots that we had shown in green. It's probably a little easier to see on that previous phasing plan. And the purpose and intent of having this hearing is to determine whether there's any changed primary criteria impacts or any new information exists that creates potentially new significant adverse impacts for the phase or phases. So staff has compiled a staff report, which goes through the primary review criteria for subdivisions, to determine whether or not there's any changed criteria. This was also sent out for agency comment, and through that agency comment notification period, staff did become aware that there were, there was a minor change to the road infrastructure that Public Works had noted as a comment that staff has recommended to be added as a condition to this subdivision. So staff's recommending that the B&amp;M Zoo Phase 1 be approved as part of the phase commencement based on the findings of fact and staff report, and subject to the following condition, that being revised improvement plans for motorized and non-motorized facilities shall be submitted to Public Works for review and approval, which show the removal of the crosswalk facilities and curbs in the Blue Mountain Road right-of-way. And in case anyone has any question, the B&amp;M Zoo subdivision was approved with striping crossing Blue Mountain Road, as well as curb facilities out in the Blue Mountain Road right-of-way. It's a county-maintained road, and Public Works had some concern over snowplow drivers cruising through there in kind of a rural setting, not expecting curb facilities out there, hitting it and causing problems, damage to the snowplow equipment. And they were also concerned with the crosswalk that would essentially drop individuals off into a ditch that doesn't link up to any other existing facilities. So Public Works has recommended that revised road improvement plans be submitted. The applicant already submitted one set to them for approval, so the revised set would show the removal of those, and then they would complete construction without the striping for the crosswalk or the curb facilities in the right-of-way. Public Works did note that they reviewed it for drainage issues and didn't foresee anything with removal of the curb facilities. And on one other note, staff did become aware through conversations with the NRC that the Watson Children's Center is working with the NRC on perfecting some water right issues that they're having in conjunction with the Peak Water Supply System that's out there. So they're working through that process. It is new information that we became aware of as a staff. However, we feel that they'll be able to address that with the NRC prior to Phase 2, and if there still does happen to be any sort of an issue out there before Phase 2, it could be addressed at that point in time. That concludes my staff report. Happy to take any questions.
Thank you. With the applicant's representative, Mr. Forsting, would you like to come up?
Hello, Commissioners. Paul Forsting, Territorial Landworks. Thanks for this opportunity to, I guess, bring in front of you Phase 1 of the B&amp;M Zoo subdivision. We understand the comments that Public Works provided, and we agree with them, and so we're hopeful that you'll support the modified condition and, I guess, approval for us to move forward with Phase 1. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the commission or discussion? Or a motion?
Any public comment?
Is there any public comment on this item? I took it for granted, given no one else popped their hands up earlier. No public comment on the B&amp;M Zoo subdivision. Okay, seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Is there any, are there any questions or discussions by the commission?
No. I would move that B&amp;M Zoo Phase 1 be approved as part of the phase commencement based on the findings of fact and the staff report, subject to the condition of approval.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next, I would like to open up a public hearing on the Emerald Lakes Estates Phasing Plan Extension. Casey, you have a staff report for us.
Casey Drayton here with Community and Planning Services to present the Emerald Lake Estates Phase 2 Phasing Plan Extension Request. This phasing plan extension request is being represented by professional consultants, and we have Dale McCormick here today with us. Emerald Lake Estates is a subdivision that's located just to the east of Salmon Lake as you're heading up towards Sealy. The property that includes the lake, as well as the Phase 2 vacant land, is shown on the screenshot there. Phase 1, which was previously platted, is shown around the east portion of the lake there. Here's the phasing plan that was amended at one point in time, but the phases still apply today. So we have Phase 2 shown in green there. Phase 1, that's previously been platted, is shown with the yellow outline. The applicants provided an example of what the Phase 2 final plat will look like. At this point in time, they're working through some DEQ sanitation approvals, and they are requesting to extend their deadline for Phase 2 to November 29th, 2019. The deadline currently sits at November 29th, 2018. There's some history on phasing plan extension shown on the screen. I won't go through some of the older stuff, but they were in front of us last October with a one-year request to get through the sanitation review. They've provided some information in the application that shows that they have been working with DEQ and the local health authorities on getting the correct information to them. There's been a handful of extension requests on behalf of the DEQ review side, so they've pushed it down the road a few times, and they don't feel that they're going to be able to get the sanitation approval in the books and everything on the final plat submitted to our office by November 29th, 2018, which is the reason for a one-year request. One year is the minimum request that we're able to entertain per the subdivision regulations. It was distributed for agency comment. Nothing of note or concern was received, and staff's recommending that the request to extend the phasing plan deadline for Phase 2 of Emerald Lake Estates be approved. Happy to take any questions you have.
Thank you. Mr. McCormick.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. For the record, Dale McCormick with Professional Consultants, representing Emerald Lake Estates LLC. As Casey said, there's been an ongoing effort to work with the Health Department and get the sanitation approval. Over the course of the summer, we did some additional groundwater monitoring to determine what the gradient of the surface water was, or the groundwater was, by creating a surface surveying multiple well locations to triangulate that. That needed to take place over the summer. We've had further submittals to the Health Department, the most recent, which was the beginning of October, and just given the cycle of the review process, and as Casey said, in the past few months, they've asked, the Health Department has asked for extensions, so things got pushed forward further than we expected. So we had asked for your support in this phasing plan extension request. Thank you.
Thank you, Dale. Is there any public comment on the Emerald Lakes Estates Phasing Plan Extension Request? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Any questions or discussion by the commission?
I have one question for Casey and the commission, I guess. I think it would probably be better if the motion had the extended 2 date in it, November 29th, 2019, right?
Yeah, that's the correct date, so.
Okay.
Very good.
In case somebody only reads the motion.
Thanks. I would move that the request to extend the phasing plan deadline for Emerald Lake Estates Phase 2 to October 18th, 2019.
November 29th.
November 29th, sorry, 2019.
Yes.
Okay. Be approved based on the staff report and public testimony.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
So last but not least, I would like to open up a public hearing on the proposed Macaulay Meadows subdivision, and as with the last two public hearings, we will begin with a staff report from Casey Drayton.
Casey Drayton here to present the Macaulay Meadows Development Proposal. This is a proposal by Ti-Tam LLC, represented by Professional Consultants Incorporated. We have Dale McCormick here and Andy Mufford as well, on behalf of PCI. This proposal went to the Planning Board Public Hearing on October 16th, 2018, and was heard by Planning Board at that date. It is now here in front of you on November 8th, 2018, for consideration. The Macaulay Meadows proposed development is located in the Target Range neighborhood, just west of Missoula, just about at the end of the Target Range neighborhood, before you would hit the Bitterroot River Corridor. The Macaulay Butte area is within a portion of the property and directly adjacent to it, to the south. The property is just over 28 acres. It's described as tract A of Certificate of Survey Number 6038, excepting therefrom a portion that was provided to Lot 11A of the Rangage Edition Number 4, which is the adjacent residential subdivision to this proposed development. The existing conditions that we have on the property today, on the 28 or so acres, the address point on the screen, directly centering this property, shown as 3100, would be an existing single-family dwelling. This is situated slightly up the hillside from the flat area on the property located at the north, and then the address point shown as 2900 would be some existing agricultural-type buildings. There's three or four of them there today. There's a driveway that sort of traverses up to that existing single-family home. It is otherwise primarily vacant. The northern portion that you can see, that looks like it's been used for agricultural purposes. It's previously been used for grazing and hay production. Everything up on the Butte is primarily untouched in native terrain, other than the existing home that's there and the surrounding sort of residential development that you can see. This existing conditions map prepared and put in the application packet shows you some of the contours there, so we do have a pretty steep slope running uphill to the south, in this case, and then a flat area at the north portion of the property. We do have an irrigation ditch bisecting the property. This is part of the Missoula Irrigation District ditch. It's a concrete-lined ditch that cuts through there, that's showing, generally running just about through the middle of the property. These photos here give you a good idea of what the property looks like, in case anyone in the room hasn't been out there themselves. The two photos here are showing more of the flat portions of the property, the agricultural area, as you might call it. And then these photos here are looking up towards the existing single-family dwelling, the bottom ones over top of those agricultural buildings that I identified in the previous picture. Everything above that's vacant. So looking at the growth policy and comprehensive plan that we have here, the property is within Missoula County and subject to the 2016 Missoula County Growth Policy. It's also located within the 2010 Target Range Plan area, designated as residential, one dwelling unit per acre, and it's within the 1993 Fort Missoula Plan area and designated as parks and open space. That Fort Missoula Plan area is everything that would be south of the red line shown on the screen here in front of you, or generally described as the areas on Macaulay Butte. Everything to the north in the Target Range Plan, it would be in the flatter portions of the property. The zoning on the property today is, it's located within the Target Range West End Rural Zoning District. That's Section 6.12 of the Missoula County Zoning Regulations, in case anyone's looking for that zoning district standard. That's probably the quickest way to find it. So the Macaulay Meadows development that we have in front of us is a plan for 17 residential lots on the 28-acre property, with an additional two-and-a-half-acre common area set aside in the, generally described as middle of the development, shown on the screen here. We have two extensions of road to access the lots that are proposed in the flat areas of the property. That's an extension of Ringo Drive, which currently exists and serves the property from the east, and then a new cul-de-sac-type road, Sadie Court, which would align with Schwenck Court, coming off of Humble Road on the west side of the property. To access the lots that are located up along the slopes of Macaulay Butte, we have a new proposed Ponderosa Lane that would trace up the hillside past the existing single-family home that's out there, and then would turn into two access easements to access those four lots that are located across the slopes of Macaulay Butte. In addition to that, we are proposing with this that there's a barn to be left on-site in the common area. The agricultural ditch would remain as is. Looking at the property, I mentioned there's pretty significant slopes, and you can see that in the photos, as well as that existing conditions map. This overlay here shows it on top of the proposed residential development. Showing on the screen here, everything with this sort of black star-shaped hatch over it would be slopes in excess of 25%. Everything in red would be greater than 20%, dropping down to orange is greater than 10%. So between 10 and 20, and then up to 10% shown in the yellow there. So you can see that there are a handful of lots up on the hillside quite a ways. A lot of that area is proposed as no build zone, everything over 25% slope with that hatch over it. The development proposes individual wells and a community septic system to supply each of the lots, so that's additional infrastructure that's proposed, in addition to the roads that we already went over. Each of the lots are, or each of the wells are shown here as the small little black dots with the bigger circle around it. Those would be well-isolation zones, for anyone who's not familiar. So those are shown to serve the 17 residential lots, as well as one proposed for the common area. We then have the community septic system drain field area. It's proposed to be collected through a series of sewer mains located throughout the development, pumped up the hill to four individual drain field locations that you can see all the way up the southern extent of lots 14 and 15, down here at the bottom of the screen that I'm highlighting. So to get to the development plan that we just saw on the screen, the applicant would need action on a planned variation, which they've requested to the Target Range West End Rural Zoning District standards for minimum lot size. They would also need approval of the subdivision. It's a 17-lot residential subdivision with a two-and-a-half-acre common area associated with it. As part of that subdivision request, they would need two variances that they've requested from Missoula County Subdivision Regulations, one for pedestrian facilities and another for through-street connections, and I'll certainly get into all that in a little more detail here. So before we get too far, just to note, there's a full staff report. There was a handful of copies provided at the back of the room today. It's also been available on the Community and Planning Services webpage, or associated with the materials for this meeting here today. That sets forth a pretty extensive set of findings of fact and conclusions of law, which lead us to the recommendations for denial of the planned variation, denial of the subdivision, and denial of the two variance requests. Today's presentation, in order to keep it in a reasonable amount of time, is focused primarily on our recommendations and not necessarily every finding of fact that's included in the staff report. So to start with the planned variation request that the applicant has requested commission action on, they're requesting a planned variation to the minimum lot size in the Target Range West End Rural Zoning District to reduce it from the one-acre minimum size established. The full text of the Target Range West End Zoning District is located on the right-hand side of the screen. You can see that the minimum lot size is established as one acre, including adjacent county right-of-way. Planned variations in Section 8.25 of the Missoula County Zoning Regulations allow the governing body to approve a planned variation to modify space and bulk requirements of any zoning districts. That includes the Target Range West End Rural Zoning District. That would be done in order to permit innovative approaches to housing and environmental design. It's not a rezoning, but it is subject to review criteria, as well as design standards that are located in Section 8.25 of the Missoula County Zoning Regulations. So before we get too far into it, just looking a little bit closer at the intent of the Target Range West End Rural Zoning District, I think it's important to note that there is some pretty strong language included in there that reads that planned variations are neither encouraged nor deemed necessary to meet the intent of this district. These regulations are also strongly prescriptive, so that citizens will know exactly what is expected of them. The district emphasizes low-density housing, consistent with the area's historical and current level of development. So it's important to consider sort of the context of the zoning district that we're working with here, as the Target Range West End Rural Zoning District is specific to this location of Missoula. So the planned variation being requested is to reduce lot sizes from the one-acre minimum. The applicant has proposed 13 lot sizes within the subdivision be reduced beyond one acre. Those range generally down to eight tenths of an acre. They're all a little bit different size, and you can see those, if you look closely on the screen here. Some of them are as close to one acre as .99 of an acre. Minimum lot sizes can be reduced by up to 50% through approval of a planned variation, so the lowest we're going is 80% here with this request. It could go down to 50% the way the zoning regulations are written. The applicant has proposed the lots on Macaulay Butte to be restricted to larger than one acre to mitigate the impacts of the smaller lots. So those would be generally the lots that you see at the southern extent of the property. They're all quite a bit larger than one acre. Regulations on planned variations, though, only speak to a reduction in the minimum lot size, and not necessarily to a restriction of lot sizes proposed to be larger than the zoning district standards. Relative locations for buildings have been identified by lots on the preliminary plat and other space and bulk requirements within the zoning district to provide a coarse level of predictability to the development. However, there's not real strong building envelopes associated here, or any sort of further development plans for each site. We're basically looking at this in terms of each lot would be open and available to build on, other than the additional regulations established through zoning. The reduction in lot sizes within the development would result in a residual 1.89 acres of space. There is some criteria associated with residual acreage accumulated through the planned variation process, in order to utilize that in a beneficial way within the development, and I'll get into that a little bit more with our recommendations. The character of this property and surrounding properties is rural, low-density residential development, with preservation and conservation easements concentrated on Macaulay Butte and riparian areas along the Bitterroot River Corridor. And there's been a handful of comments received on this planned variation that indicate reduced lot sizes will not promote conservation of agriculture and open space resources. Further, the reduction in lot sizes will not embody the atmosphere and values of the Target Range community. Detail expressed in the comments indicate that development will have unmitigated impacts on topography, natural vegetation, the aquifer in the area, and transportation. Drainage is another factor to be reviewed with the planned variation request when looking through the planned variation criteria. There's been some concern over the drainage through a few rounds of review of this subdivision that was originally noted by City of Missoula Engineering. Missoula County Public Works didn't provide an in-depth review of it, stating that they would review it at time of final plat approval. However, City of Missoula Engineering noted that there may be drainage concerns with the subdivision due to the runoff lawn coefficient that the applicant used in their calculations for drainage. They were concerned that because of the coefficient that they used being for flat areas as opposed to steep slopes, some of the drainage calculations for the areas along Macaulay Butte may not actually be how drainage is going to flow across this property. Those were comments that were received, so staff has provided some notes in the staff report to that effect. I believe the applicant at the Planning Board hearing stated that the calculations they provided do comply with DEQ Section 8 drainage review standards. However, it may not comply with how the City of Missoula would look at them, per se. So as mentioned earlier, staff has recommended denial of this planned variation request, and as a basis for that denial request, we found that the proposal provides no information on building sites or design standards, which should address scenic vistas, natural landscape features, topography, and natural drainage areas. The proposal does not meet the general goals of the Fort Missoula Plan and Target Range Plan to conserve and promote open space, native species, wildlife, views, vistas, and agricultural land. That residual acreage that I had mentioned accumulated through modifying lot sizes is not being used for recreational or other outdoor living purposes, preserving large trees, tree groves, ponds, streams, natural drainage areas, rock-out crops, native plant life, wildlife cover, or protecting adjacent properties or uses. The applicants proposed it for agricultural use, however, that's not specifically contemplated as a use that the residual acreage should be set aside for in the zoning criteria. The development does not meet all the identified purposes of the Missoula County Zoning Regulations, and has not reasonably considered the character of the area and its peculiar suitability for particular uses. The development contradicts the intent of the Target Range West End Rural Zoning District, and does not fit in with the character of the surrounding area, as identified in the adopted comprehensive plan and land use recommendations for this area. Adverse impacts to nearby properties and their occupants have been identified through written comment and public testimony at the Planning Board hearing. There was a handful of the There was a handful of the folks I see in the room here today that were there for that. The connectivity for pedestrian and motorized access is limited within the subdivision and would restrict access possibilities for property owners within this development as well as property owners adjacent to this development. Public services are limited. Water and sewer service are not available to the development. So we do have some public roads that lead us there. We have fire, police protection, ambulance services that could be available to the subdivision. However, two big ones, water and sewer are not available. And native vegetation, drainage and topography will be largely altered as a result of the development. So all of these that I've just listed as a basis for denial strongly correlate with criteria for review established in section 8.25 of the Missoula County zoning regulations. And because of each of these reasons, staff has recommended denial of the planned variation request to reduce the lot sizes to less than one acre in the target range West End Rural Zoning District for this property. Looking at the subdivision request, we have a handful of review criteria here and we're going to start with zoning and growth policy compliance. So as mentioned, the 2016 Missoula County Growth Policy, which encompasses all areas of Missoula County, identifies objectives associated with the promotion of agricultural activities and guiding development to areas best suited for it with the least impact on natural resources. Approximately 15.3 acres of this property are in the target range plan area, generally recommended for residential development at one dwelling unit per acre. The plan however places great emphasis on maintaining the rural low density residential theme with a focus on resource preservation, the key resource in that plan being agriculture. And this is a plan that was heavily supported and crafted by homeowners of the area in conjunction or in addition to the target range West End Rural Zoning District standards. The south portion of the property is within the Fort Missoula Plan area with a land use designation of parks and open space. This plan provides guiding principles similar to the target range plan that focus on conservation of key resources such as native vegetation, views and vistas, and agricultural land. McCauley Butte is further recognized as being within an open space cornerstone within the Missoula urban area. Open space plan updated in 2006. These lands are identified as a high priority for protection. So generally taking all of the themes and goals established throughout all these plans, we find that there is heavy emphasis in this area on protecting key resources, many of which focus on land that we find within the flat area of the subdivision with the agricultural resources as well as the sloped areas of the subdivision along McCauley Butte. This map here was taken out of the target range neighborhood plan. What this is is sort of a compiling of factors in relation to suitability for residential development. The red on this plan being areas that are recommended as low suitability for residential development, going up to green as areas with high suitability for residential development. The property we'd be looking at here is located down within this red area. So that being the lowest suitability for residential development. The criteria that went into this is shown at the top of the screen. So that's wildlife habitat sensitive land, prime soils, mountain water access or Missoula water access, city sewer service, transportation, transit, bike routes, city fire travel response time. So when all those factors are laid together, the plan has generally come up with a recommendation that this would be low suitability for residential development. In looking at zoning compliance, key themes and guiding principles of the growth policy, target range plan, Fort Missoula Plan, and the Missoula Urban Area Open Space Plan are reiterated in the intent statement of the target range West End Rural Zoning District standards. The zoning district has a minimum lot size of one acre and it has uses focused primarily on single family residential and agricultural type use. And staff has found that the proposed preliminary plat layout does not comply with the minimum lot size of one acre established in the target range West End Rural Zoning District. An effort to resolve compliance would require fundamental redesign of the subdivision. That is with the denial recommendation on the planned variation request. The subdivision therefore becomes no longer compliant with zoning. The proposal is not in substantial compliance with the growth policy, including the amending plans recommendations, that being the target range plan and Fort Missoula Plan for development and preservation of agricultural resources and the areas of McCauley Butte. And development on McCauley Butte does not substantially comply with the open space cornerstone designation in the Missoula Urban Area Open Space Plan. Looking at agriculture and agricultural water user facilities, we can see here that we do have prime farmland if irrigated mapped soils. And we've heard that the guiding plans and zoning recommend preservation of these agricultural resources. So that layered with the soil profiles that we have there which are mapped and also confirmed through onsite soil samples, that information provided in the application, that we do have an area suited for agricultural use within this property. The property is currently and historically been used for grazing and hay production as I previously mentioned. The areas along McCauley Butte wouldn't necessarily be seen as prime agricultural land. That dividing line in the soils is shown there in the yellow cutting across the property. We do have the Missoula Irrigation District ditch which bisects the property, which would further support agricultural use on this property. The use of that water would be governed by the irrigation district themselves. The applicant's proposed a handful of uses from that ditch. However, we have no confirmation from the Missoula Irrigation District at this point in time acknowledging that proposed use. So we're not sure, you know, 100% that they would actually have access to that water to be able to use it. The applicant has set aside a two and a half acre common area for agricultural use as mitigation to agricultural impacts within the subdivision. You can see that on the left hand side of the screen. I've traced the outline of that two and a half acres in red there. What you see on the right hand side of the screen are some calculations taken by removing the areas of that two and a half acres that are shown within road easements, irrigation district ditch easements, where an existing barn and driveway are proposed, and an area shown as slopes over 10% that have not historically been used for farming. And what you end up with is really about 1.71 acres of functional agricultural land surrounding all of that. So the actual agricultural soils for utilization as agriculture are reduced significantly beyond that two and a half acre proposal that the applicant has set forth. The applicant has provided covenants with the application packet which indicate that the homeowners association will hold title to this common area. They would have the ability to lease or sell the area to an interested farmer. The covenants also allow the ability for residential use on the common area. That could further restrict the actual acreage that we would have to use for farming on this property. There's been several comments and there was public testimony which focused largely on the fact that we have a common area designed for agriculture. And while there may be people out there that would enjoy the opportunity to farm it, there were some significant considerations noted, including the design of this area, some of the provisions included in the covenants dealing with the restriction of livestock and the sort of oversight of a homeowners association over top of someone leasing it or the sale of it and what types of restrictions may be included on that. There's a lot of information that's left unknown at this point in time. So we can't really say for sure how the functionality of that agricultural lot would be used in perpetuity, especially once it's sold and you get a residential unit on that property. The actual continuation of agriculture could become an issue at some point in time. So on the basis for subdivision denial relating to agriculture and agricultural water user facilities, restricting that two and a half acres as shown on the plat of which 1.71 would be considered usable farmland for agriculture does not reasonably mitigate these subdivisions' potential adverse impacts to agriculture. The subdivision does not provide adequate protections for permanent agricultural open space based on those covenant provisions that I just went over. Surface water from the irrigation ditch may be available to this property, but at this point in time we're lacking information on it or confirmation from the irrigation district. And what we can see here is that the primary intent is to create residential lots, including a residential lot for the common area. And any efforts to resolve this as well as some of those documentation issues in the covenants, to create a real usable farmland would create a significant redesign associated with the subdivision, which are all factors leading to staff's recommendation for denial focused primarily on this ag issue. Looking at local services within the subdivision, as I mentioned earlier, we do have a handful of county maintained public roadways which would serve this development. These are all offsite roads. The quickest way to get there would probably be from South Avenue, taking a left and traversing south down Humble Road. That would get you to the west side of the property. There'd be a few different ways to get over to the east side of the property, all the way down to Ringo Drive. You could either utilize Glenn Drive or go down Humble and make a turn onto Sundown. So there's a few different ways to get there. Looking at the onsite roads, we're in the urban area of Missoula. The subdivision would be subject to urban standards for roads and development. The applicant's proposed 24 foot wide roads within a 60 foot access easement for Sadie Court, which is the cul-de-sac coming in off the west from Humble Road. And the same for the extension of Ringo Drive on the east side of the subdivision. Sadie Court is proposed to be private, a privately maintained road. The application indicates that Ringo Drive would actually be an extension of the public county maintained road. That would take some further information as well as commission action, is my understanding from an email that Public Works sent, which is included as an attachment to the staff report, to actually have the county maintain that extension of Ringo Drive there internal to the subdivision. They're then proposing a 20 foot wide access road, Ponderosa Lane, to take you up to the lots along McCauley Butte. That would be within a 60 foot access easement in a private road. Slops on that road go up to about 8.6%. So as mentioned, there was a variance request relating to through road connections. This has to deal with the two adjacent cul-de-sacs, the one being the extension of Ringo Drive and the other one, the new Sadie Court. These cul-de-sacs directly adjacent to each other are, they vary from the Missoula County subdivision regulations which require the through road connections. The applicant has made this variance request to waive the requirement from making that connection. Staff has recommended denial of that variance request. Staff has a handful of findings in the staff report which really state that for safety and the through connection as well as access and functionality, those two cul-de-sacs should be connected. There's really no hardship as to why they could not be connected in this case. They're a matter of, I think it's just over 100 feet apart. It wouldn't take substantially more to make that connection. It would increase the safety associated with them. So staff is recommending denial of that request. It would require, if that connection was made, a relocation of a cistern and fire hydrant that was proposed between the two cul-de-sacs. So all roadways within the subdivision are proposed at widths which are not capable of supporting parking based on the number of units served and the appropriate mechanisms to restrict and enforce no parking would be required. They've not been provided with this subdivision. For the public extension of Ringo Drive, it would take commission action to establish a no parking district along that road. And for the two private roads, they would have to put some significant covenant provisions in place to restrict and enforce the no parking along those roads. That information's not been provided in the application. And that the road infrastructure does not include that through connection between Ringo Drive and Sadie Court and a redesign of the road network may have negative impacts which have not been reviewed for everyone who looked at and reviewed this application reviewed it based on those two adjacent cul-de-sacs as opposed to through connection. Looking at pedestrian access within the subdivision, the applicant has proposed one eight foot wide trail to traverse the subdivision from the extent over at Ringo Drive across to Humble Road on the south side of Sadie Court and Ringo Drive. It would make a connection across that portion where those two cul-de-sacs leave out the motorized connections. We would have some pedestrian connectivity across the subdivision. This extension would then link up to an adjacent cul-de-sac that is, or an adjacent sidewalk that's located along Schwank Court on the south side of Schwank Court there. Existing non-motorized facilities out in this area on one or both sides of roads are highlighted in red. It's an area where there's not a whole lot of pedestrian facilities out there. However, there are a few and we're not too far off from a greater connection. The biggest one that would really connect you would be up at South Avenue. So we feel that pedestrian access within the subdivision is important, especially with the number of new residential lots that are going in. Some connections and expanded network would certainly help out homeowners within the subdivision. And as mentioned, there's a variance request associated with this. The applicant has requested a variance to waive the requirement for pedestrian facilities along Ponderosa Lane. Pedestrian facilities are required to provide access to all lots within the subdivision and major subdivisions along the roadways. We can see here that the applicant's proposing no pedestrian facilities along Ponderosa Lane and that's the subject of the variance request. Staff's recommending denial of that variance request largely based on the safety component that you'd be putting pedestrians onto a road within 8.6% slope. That's 20 feet in width, so it's a fairly narrow road. And you'd be likely to have some conflicts there, especially in adverse weather. I would like to note that parks, trails, and open lands did recommend approval of this variance request. However, with that recommendation for approval, they put together a pretty extensive comment. So it wasn't just that they were recommending approval of the variance with no other recommendations. They're recommending approval of the variance with the, a few different connections being made within the subdivision. Those are shown generally over here on the map that Garrick put together with the red lines. So he was recommending a few additional connections along Humble over here on the west side and a connection to Lot 10 kind of over here central to the subdivision. That would ensure that all of the lots that are not subject to this variance request do have pedestrian access. If these lots do not have these connections, then they should therefore also be subject to variance requests. So there was really more to that comment than I think some people may be considering at this point in time. Looking at the basis for denial relating to pedestrian access, the general design standard for non-motorized access to all lots within the subdivision is not met and would require extension of facilities to comply. There's been no information or anything put forth on what those facilities may look like if they needed to be there. Looking at the water for this subdivision, individual wells for domestic water supply for the 18 lots and for irrigation purposes on lots one through seven and 12 is proposed. As mentioned earlier, each of those dots on the screen would be a well location. The applicant is also proposing that the Missoula Irrigation District ditch provide irrigation supply on lots eight through 11, 13 through 17, and the common area. So what we have is sort of a split of water use. Some of the lots within the subdivision will be able to use the well for domestic supply and irrigation. Some will have a well just for domestic supply and not necessarily for irrigation. The applicant is proposing that individual homeowners be responsible for the installation of irrigation water supply facilities from the ditch. So that would require each property owner on lots eight through 11, 13 through 17, and then whoever's managing the common area to go to the Missoula Irrigation District and seek approval. Once they've gained approval, they would have to install their own facilities to pump that water to their lot. Staff's noted that that logistically doesn't make sense in some cases or a lot of cases, whereas individual homeowners would be required to install facilities to pump their water up slopes greater than 25% in some cases. And in the case of Lot 15, the homeowner would have to pipe their water underneath the newly constructed Ponderosa Lane to even get water there, or they would have to send water all the way around through a few adjacent lots and secure easements from those property owners in order to do so. So we have a pretty significant challenge with getting water up to irrigate these properties. It should be noted that if the ditch is not used and the well is on any of these lots indicated eight through 11, 13 through 17, or the common area, and the well is used for irrigation, they would then be in violation of the calculations that they provided to DNRC for combined appropriation. They've essentially maxed out their 10 acre feet with the water for domestic supply in all the lots and irrigation on these select lots. So if one of these property owners located up on the slopes of McCauley Butte decides that they don't actually want to install those facilities or can't install those facilities and instead waters their lawn from the well, they would be in violation of that DNRC. and instead waters their lawn from the well, they would be in violation of that DNRC combined appropriation calculation that they've provided and that we're reviewing for here today. And if one of those property owners just simply said that they didn't want to irrigate a lawn at all, which could be a potential here, then we'd likely have issues with the drainage calculations that were provided. Those drainage calculations do rely heavily on irrigated lawn area for compliance with what they've provided. So any way we look at it, those property owners really would need to install those facilities. However, they're leaving it up to the homeowners to do so. So we really have no oversight or guarantee that the water use is actually going to play out like the applicant has proposed with the subdivision. And I've gone through that first basis for denial pretty extensively. I'd also like to mention that easements to ensure access to individual wells and isolation zones should be depicted on the plat. There's a few wells on this plat here. This is the utility plan, but on the plat as well, where there's wells that would be located off of the property in which they will serve, and they would need to provide adequate easements to allow those property owners access to their well. Access to the surface water has not been acknowledged or confirmed by the irrigation districts. So staff does have some concern in that regard. And information on groundwater quality has not been provided and is derived to be of acceptable quality based on other permitted wells in the area. Looking at the sewer system for this property, the applicant has proposed a series of sewer mainline connections, which will then pump the sewage uphill to four individual drainfield zones, which would then leach back down the hill as shown on this utility plan here. It's a kind of a complex system that they've proposed, so I went ahead and pulled out a little snippet from the Water and Sanitation Report summary provided in the application to describe it to you. You're welcome to read through the full thing. However, Planning Board, as well as myself, finds it somewhat conserving, concerning that the distribution valve will spread the effluent out into four drainfield zones to help reduce chances of slope failure and erosion. So I don't know what those chances look like, but certainly don't think that we want any chance up there of slope failure or erosion, considering that we're going to have home sites located directly adjacent and below it, as well as 18 new residential wells and a handful of surrounding wells, as well as the irrigation district ditch right at the toe of the slope. So I think the, hopefully the applicant can provide some clarification as to what our chances might be with this one. So sanitary services will be provided to the subdivision. These will ultimately be reviewed by DEQ. They've gone through the slope waiver review process to put the drainfields up on the slope. However, it's not necessarily a full DEQ approval at this point in time. And details on the location of all the required facilities and necessary easement areas have not been provided. And some of that has to do with some of the facilities that they described here in their system. We're just not even sure where those are going to be located on the property at this point in time. Looking at the Parks and Recreation components, the required dedication is only 1.2 acres based on Missoula County subdivision regulations. They're proposing two and a half acres, so they're meeting and going above and beyond what's required in terms of dedication requirements. Preservation of ag land is considered a design principle, so they are checking that box as well for parkland dedication. Parks, Trails and Open Lands was in support of this common area, seeing that they're in close proximity to the new Fort Missoula Regional Park area. However, there does appear to be one major issue with the parkland or common area dedication in this case, and it's that it's proposed to be available for transfer to an entity other than a Property Owners Association, a land conservation entity, or the governing body. So as I mentioned, the Homeowners Association would originally have control of it, however they could lease and then potentially sell that property based on the covenants to somebody looking to farm it. So that does not comply with the subdivision regulations. We didn't find any adverse impacts to schools requiring mitigation, and there hadn't been any concerns raised over it. Looking at fire and police protection, police protection is estimated to be available to this property in a manner consistent with its location. And fire protection was reviewed for by the Missoula Rural Fire District. There's two cisterns and hydrants proposed for fire supply within the subdivision. However, staff has identified that we do have somewhat of an issue with legitimate alternative escape routes. This property is located within the Wildland Urban Interface, and each of the properties really only has one way in and out. Through-connection on the two adjacent cul-de-sacs would certainly help out the roads, or help out the properties located in the flat areas. However, the lots up along McCauley Butte would still be restricted to only one way in and one way out. Looking at the natural environment, wildlife and wildlife habitat, you can see here we are adjacent to a pretty significant natural area along the Bitterroot River corridor, as well as the remaining lands of McCauley Butte. The comprehensive plans for the area have identified the native vegetation along the slopes of McCauley Butte as being of utmost importance. We have native grasslands, as well as some conifer trees that have grown in, sort of down at the southern reaches. Adjacent to this property, this property is showing just up here at the end of Humble Road, is about 280 acres of contiguous Five Alleys Land Trust Conservation Easement. So that, all that land has been protected under some form or another through those conservation easements. There's no protections proposed with this subdivision, other than no build zones based on anything over a 25% slope. Looking also at adjacent subdivisions, the Rangitch Edition Number Four, which is the adjacent subdivision to the north, as well as the east of this subdivision, they established a no-build, no-excavation zone just north, or just south of the irrigation ditch, right at about the toe of the slope from McCauley Butte. So that's shown in this faint line that I'm kind of hovering over right now on the screen. So adjacent development has precluded any sort of excavation or construction along the slopes of McCauley Butte as well, even though it may not be in a conservation easement. So there's a few different ways that conservation of those resources, the natural environment, could be achieved. Wildlife and wildlife habitat, there was a few wildlife species identified by the applicant in the applicant packet. The current conditions map shows a game trail even, in fact, cutting across this property. Staff didn't find, based on the information we had available, that there was any major concerns over wildlife and wildlife habitat. However, handful of property owners spoke at the planning board hearing over top of the kind of numerous amounts of deer that they see up on the property, as well as foxes. So I'm sure there's probably some here today that could speak to that wildlife in greater detail, since they're out there and have the ability to see it on a more regular basis. So with that, the impacts to the natural environment, specifically the native vegetation on the slopes of McCauley Butte, will be significant and lasting with the proposed disturbance related to subdivision improvements. This is primarily related to the road infrastructure, cutting in those roads. It's a pretty steep grade. There's going to be some significant disturbance required to get those in, as well as driveways and home sites. Mitigation of the impacts to the natural environment, native vegetation, would require significant changes to the subdivision design and development restrictions that have not been reviewed for. I would just also like to note on sort of the disruption to the natural environment, it's anticipated that when any of those properties go in there to build a home, that they're going to excavate a pretty large area, and staff noted some issues earlier with drainage calculations on the slopes. At the planning board hearing, the applicant actually noted that property owners are likely to go in and flatten out a larger area and plant grass. So they've kind of confirmed for us that there's going to be pretty significant disruption to this hillside based on that statement that they made as well. Looking at public health and safety, emergency services, and water and sanitation are proposed to be available to the subdivision. The actual review of water and sanitation would be left to the professionals with DEQ, but as they have it proposed, it would be available, and there may be issues with it down the road, especially if there's slope failure. We could also have some concerns with public health and safety at that point as well. However, it's unknown at this time because the information on the slope failure seems pretty vague. We found that the proposal has met the survey requirements. The developers submitted a plat which does not comply with all the requirements of local subdivision regulations. We followed the necessary application procedures, and it's been reviewed within the procedures provided for in Chapter 5, which lays out sort of the framework for subdivision review. The proposal meets most requirements for utility easements. As I noted, we did see that there were a couple of those wells, which don't have adequate easement areas, and potentially some of the sewer infrastructure may not be laid out with, in proper easement areas. And the proposal would have legal and physical access to the subdivision. So staff has recommended that this subdivision be denied, as I previously mentioned. So as we went over a few times throughout this presentation, Planning Board did hear this request on October 16th. A few of these statements here were taken as excerpts from the Planning Board minutes. It was noted a few times throughout the hearing by the applicant's representative that they expected staff to essentially draft conditions that would have gotten the subdivision to where it needed to be. A few of the Planning Board members did take issue with that, as you can read here on the screen from some of their quotes. They also spoke to the importance of preserving usable agricultural land. They, they did like the general concept of some sort of a conservation design where you could have a working farm. However, they felt that this proposal just didn't provide enough information, nor did it provide adequate area to get them there, to seeing it as being something beneficial in this case. And the Planning Board ultimately, after about three-hour and 15-minute hearing, did make the recommendations that the planned variation be denied, that the two variance requests be denied, and that the subdivision be denied as well. And there is a Planning Board recap that was provided to you with more detail, as well as the Planning Board minutes. So the options that we have in front of us here today for you, these are your sort of full suite of options that you have available to you. Obviously, we've said what staff's recommending. Approval is an option. Approval subject to conditions is also an option. Denial is an option, or continuation of the hearing is also an option. The 60-day deadline in which this decision needed to be made takes us to next Thursday, November 15th. And again, here's staff's recommended motions, all for denial. I'm happy to jump back to these at any point in time if you wish. And you may be asking yourself how we got here to these denial recommendations today. This hasn't been a short or an easy process necessarily to get to. This started back in March of 2017 with a scoping meeting with the applicant, applicant's representatives. Some of the major challenges identified were steep slopes, growth policy compliance, parkland open space, combined with agricultural interests. Some of those same concerns were carried over to the pre-application meeting, and it was explicitly sent to Dale McCormick on June 9th in an email that the subdivision is likely not in substantial compliance with the comprehensive plans for this property. Going through the neighborhood meeting, big issues were raised regarding traffic, sewer and well contamination, butte preservation, and agricultural conservation. During the element reviews, issues raised by staff related to the common area being saleable, detail and growth policy assessment, and through-road connections, sufficiency reviews with agencies, similar issues again were noted. And then ultimately, the governing body review application packet was submitted on August 31st. The application was found sufficient on August 17th, which, which started the 60 working day deadline, which takes us until November 15th, next Thursday. However, two weeks after that, the applicant submitted the full application packet that was posted online, that you have in front of you today, and that staff reviewed for. The recommendations in the report were communicated to the applicant's representative on October 5th. The staff report was issued for public review on October 9th, one week prior to the Planning Board hearing. So the concerns that staff had were noted throughout the, each of the steps of the review process. We didn't officially come to a denial recommendation until we compiled the full staff report. This wasn't something staff was able to quickly do. We went through all 320-some pages of that application packet in thorough detail, drafted over, I think it's 260 findings of fact and over 50 conclusions of law in there to drive us to that ultimate denial recommendation for each of the four requests in front of us. So it's not something that we just drew up at the last minute or withheld. It really took a thorough analysis of all the information to get us to that point. And as mentioned, the application that was reviewed was the one that was submitted on August 31st to our office. A revised preliminary plat layout was provided via hard copy to the Planning Board by the applicant's representative on October 16th at the hearing. That revised layout had some slight changes to some of the lot configurations, as well as the common area. That second draft, as you will, of the preliminary plat wasn't necessarily considered or acted on by Planning Board. There was very limited discussion on it. The applicant passed it out and mentioned it, and that was about all we heard of it. In fact, it doesn't show up in the Planning Board minutes. It was, you know, very kind of pushed aside in review of the actual application that was submitted. And then I believe in front of you here today, as well as passed out at the back of the room, the applicant has dropped off a third version of the preliminary plat, which does have, in staff's eyes, potentially some material differences. If that was submitted to staff, it would be considered an amended application. However, it just came to us here today, so just wanted to provide a note on that. And I think John's happy to speak a little bit more about information that may be provided to us by the applicant or the applicant's representative. That concludes my staff report. Thanks for bearing with me on that one. Happy to take any questions.
Okay. Thanks, Casey. Would the applicant or applicant's representative like to present? Mr. McCormick?
So for the record, Dale McCormick with PCI, representing Titan LLC, which is Dave and Tammy Keck. I want to thank Casey for his work on this, despite my disagreement with his conclusion. I brought many projects before you over the years, and hope you know that recommendation of denial, denial is not where I would expect to be at this point in the process. It was a week and a half before the Planning Board meeting that I learned staff would be recommending denial. And based on agency comment and staff correspondence included in this middle, I was expecting a recommendation of conditional approval and potentially denial of the through-connection variance. And I think there should be a better method of giving applicants a specific heads-up that denial is imminent, if that is the case. Similarly, the Planning Board minutes provide four pages of transcription of Casey's report without any transcription whatsoever of my presentation. So I don't believe the Planning Board minutes communicate a balanced representation of the proceedings that evening for your consideration, without you taking the time to watch the video. And also, the minutes don't transcribe the comments made by the public at the meeting. Just briefly summarize them, in some cases, refer you to a letter rather than their testimony. In my 20-year professional career, this is only the second time I've been in this position with a recommendation of denial from staff and Planning Board. That project, Glacier Creek Meadows, located in Condon and approved in 2011 was the last time. And what was different is that there was a lengthy give and take based on written agency comments from rural initiatives, Fish Wildlife and Parks, and the Fish and Wildlife Service, who are very clear about not supporting the subdivision. This process took two years and consisted of many meetings between the applicant and agencies. And at the end, there was a compromise from all sides and a solution that was acceptable to the county commissioners, agencies, and the public was approved. So where would we have known that staff was going to recommend denial of the subdivision? It would seem if that was a serious consideration, it would have been possible to let us know so we could respond accordingly. In Casey's testimony at the Planning Board meeting indicated the staff report was being finalized up until the time it was issued, because there are public comments were not received until late in the process, which is true. But it just seems like there's, there's room for improvement in how it's communicated to the applicant, that when you go through that sufficiency process, to very clearly state that denial is imminent unless certain things take place. So this subdivision is based on developments across the country. Here are examples from Fort Collins, Colorado, and South Burlington, Vermont, where development and agriculture coexist in the spirit of the farm-table movement. So how did we get to this point? Back in December of 2016, almost two years ago, I asked to meet with Gene Zosel, the Executive Director of Garden City Harvest, and Genevieve Jessup Marsh, the Community Outreach Director. Director of Garden City Harvest. My intention was to see about the possibility of partnering with Garden City Harvest to incorporate a working farm into the McCauley Meadows subdivision. In this meeting, it was established that two to three acres was a workable size for a truly productive farm, as shown by some local examples I'll share in a bit. We had a follow-up meeting in February with Dave and Tammy Keck, Gene and Genevieve, and PCI, to see what was possible. Gene needed to check in with her Board of Directors and see how this fit in with their mission and work plan for the foreseeable future. Based on that meeting, we had a scoping meeting in March of 2017, with caps, to share our intention to move forward with the subdivision and to confirm that a planned variation could be proposed in the Target Range West End Rural Zoning District. That zoning district specifically prohibits density bonuses, Section 3.06m of the zoning regulations, and cluster development standards, which is Section 3.06O, but does not prohibit planned variation and PUDs. And that's why we met with caps to make sure that that was the case. Gene explained how Garden City Harvest was in the midst of a capital campaign and focusing on the new River Road headquarters, and their board didn't think getting involved with this project was the direction they wanted to go. At that point, Gene introduced us to Bonnie Buckingham, who's the Director of the Community Food and Agriculture Coalition, or CFAC, and suggested that moving forward, CFAC could assist in helping to move this project forward. And at the suggestion of Bonnie, we added the potential of a home site as part of the farm, and have included that in our sanitation design. We discussed the potential for lease or purchase of the property, which would be controlled by the Homeowners Association, and the use of FarmLink Montana, linking farmers with landowners wanting to lease. And at the Planning Board meeting, Bonnie Buckingham stated that there are currently 40 farmers looking for leased land in this area for land of this size, which confirmed our discussion at that meeting. So based on that direction, we scheduled our pre-application meeting with caps in June And this was the neighborhood meeting plat that we presented. It's not unusual to have public comments, as we heard at the neighborhood meeting in June of 2017. What I always look for is where there's an overlap between public comment and agency comments. There were comments about development on the hillside. There were comments about the sewer system. There are the... There's not a strong opposition to the connection between Ringo Drive and Sadie Court. There was an email request after the meeting from an adjacent nearby property owner, which is included in the public comment section of the submittal. The request was to reduce the number of lots accessed from Ringo and increase the number of lots accessed from Humble Drive. So we reduced the Ringo Drive access from seven lots and the common area to only three lots off of Ringo Drive, with the remaining 14 lots and common area accessing off of Humble Road. And the common area was increased from 2.3 acres to 2.5 acres. And that's the plat that you see here that's in the submittal. Comments from Rural Fire District after the neighborhood meeting and before submitting it for element review were that the threshold for the requirement of two separate fire apparatus roads is 30 dwelling units, and fire department access is not required between the cul-de-sacs. I wanted to vet that before I submitted the proposal, because if there was a public health or safety concern about not having a through-street, we wouldn't have pursued that direction. Similarly, comments from Public Works after the neighborhood meeting and before submitting it for element review were that they defer to caps and the subdivision regulations in regards to the use of cul-de-sacs versus through-streets. Ultimately, as it got into agency review, they weighed in on that as well, saying that the connection should be made per the subdivision regulations. But we had submitted it at that point. And there were no other further comments from the Fire District saying that they thought the through-connection should be made. So the common area is expanded from 2.3 acres, and the Ringo cul-de-sac, which serves seven lots in the common area, now is supposed to serve only three lots, based on public at the meeting. Because the Missoula Rural Fire didn't have concerns with the cul-de-sac, we left the road design, as is for sufficiency review, and expected when the approval got to this point, staff would recommend approval, including a condition requiring a through-connection, as has occurred in other subdivisions. When I didn't receive comments from Parks, Trails, and Open Lands during first sufficiency review, I reached out to them, and they said that they hadn't been asked to provide agency comment, although caps requested comments from City, Parks, and Rec. Parks, Trails, and Open Lands' initial comments came a month late because of that omission of the agency list. And the reason I was curious about the position is that I assumed they would weigh in on the impact of this subdivision relative to the adjacent conservation lands on McCauley Butte and the open-space land use designation. And as you can see, they commented that they support the proposed common area to meet county subdivision parkland requirements, as the subdivision is within 1.5 ground miles from Fort Missoula Regional Park. In addition, the proposed common area will fulfill open-space needs, protecting the neighborhood character of Target Range. They also commented, as Casey reported, that they would support the variance request to not provide pedestrian facilities along Ponderosa Lane, as per the county subdivision regulations. So now that I've helped you understand how we got to this point, I'd like to explore the inspiration for this opportunity. Two examples of working farms on two to three acres are Garden City Harvest projects. The first is Orchard Gardens, which is a partnership with Homeward and part of an affordable housing neighborhood west of Reserve Street on North Grove. It is two acres in size, and it has enough land to produce 18 community-supported agricultural CSA shares, 13 community garden plots, and flowers resulting in upwards of 20,000 pounds of produce seasonally. Another farm that is the example is the Youth Farm. It's slightly over two acres and provides 86 CSA shares and four mobile market sites providing fresh produce to seniors and low-income families. This farm produces up to 30,000 pounds of produce seasonally. So that brings us to the plat presented at the Planning Board, which is not mentioned, as Casey reported, is not mentioned in the Planning Board minutes. And there are two changes to bring your attention to. First lots 11, 12, and 13, which are on the east and west of the common area, were reduced to the minimum 0.8 acres, allowing the common area to grow from 2.5 acres to 2.75 acres. Also, a 40-foot-wide resource protection zone, no-build area, has been added to the south boundary of the subdivision to ensure there is contiguous no-build area adjacent to the conservation easements to the south and to the east. Those conservation easements were created with the approval of the Miners Edition preliminary plat. That project had a goal of open-space conservation and is undoubtedly a very successful solution to transfer density from the land in conservation to a 19.4-acre parcel that would have 128 units in the form of townhomes on 2,500-square-foot lots and single-family detached homes on lots as large as 9,500 square feet. The cost of extending sewer and water to this project and the cost of excavation on slopes greater than 25% has created some challenges to recording the final plat. The Miners Edition subdivision provided no mitigation to impacts on agriculture, since all the 28 units were proposed on lands containing the exact same soil, the Grantsdale loam 0 to 2%, as this project. I don't see that as a fault of the Miners Edition subdivision and planned variation, but rather to frame what conservation goals drove that project. McCauley Meadows is driven by preserving agricultural soils and the opportunity for a working farm. The Target Range West End Rural Zoning District allows up to 21 units on the 28.3 acres after hillside density reduction. As shown in the Hillside Property Density Reduction calculation worksheet, there are 13 units permitted on slopes equal to or less than 10%, and eight units on slopes greater than 10%. So the question is, what does the planned variation provide variation from? This is what would be allowed by the underlying zoning, in which all the lots are one acre or greater, and the open space requirement of 1.6 acres is met by the common area surrounding the barn, which the applicant wants to preserve. This is not a direction we wanted to pursue. So based on what we heard at Planning Board, we're presenting a third version of the plat for your consideration. McCauley Meadows planned variation now proposes 12 units on slopes equal to or less than 10%, and four units, 50% of that permitted, on slopes greater than 10%. We are proposing three lot-size minimums. The garden lots, which surround the farm common area, which would be 0.8 acres minimum, the common area itself at three acres minimum, and the hillside lots, also at three acres minimum. This allows us to transfer the 20% reduction from the 13 garden lots to create a 3.0-acre farm common area and reduce the number of lots by one. The farm common area has been expanded to full three acres, and the number of 0.8-acre lots has been reduced from 10 lots down to six lots, all on the north side of Sadie Court. The remaining lots are one acre or greater. This plat is providing more than three times the open space requirement of .91 acres. The 1.2-acre parkland dedication referred to earlier was calculated incorrectly. The worksheet in the application uses gross acreage. This is corrected and uses the net acreage calculation. So it's more than three times the parkland dedication required. The separation between the one-dwelling unit-per-acre land use designation and the Parks and Open Space designation is not established by the toe of the slope, but rather by the existing driveway, which will be where Ponderosa Lane is put and improved to be a safer road. The building sites on lots 14 through 16 represent only 20% of the total acreage, while the remaining 80% is no-build, with the exception of driveway and drain field area, which will be restored to natural state. Separation between the one-dwelling unit... Due to the reduction in lot size of the garden lots, individual wells and community sewer system are proposed, and the drain field would be located on the portion of the site that is primarily grasses on the hillside lots. Location of the drain field of the site has been approved by the Department of Environmental Quality. DEQ initially denied the slopes waiver because they needed more information, so we provided an extensive study to prove that a limiting layer was between 28 and 52 feet below the surface of the drain field location. And the slope stability analysis is the thickest part of the submittal that Casey's comment that there was insufficient information, I think, is surprising. So extra work on the geotechnical aspects of the property, of the project, was done. It was costly and delayed the project, but it was pursued because we clearly understood that DEQ needed more data to feel more comfortable approving the drain field location, which they have. So another hillside issue is to better understand what a house would look like on the hillside lots, 16 and 17. And so we modeled a typical two-story home in perspective and placed it in the location where the building envelopes would be for those lots. This first slide is a view south on Humble Road, close from the intersection with South Second slide is a view south on Humble Road from the northwest corner of the proposed McCauley Meadows subdivision. A conclusion of law on page 15 of the staff report regarding agriculture states, "The efforts to mitigate agricultural impacts to increase the preservation of additional agriculture acreage would be a fundamental redesign of the subdivision, requiring review as a new subdivision." Similarly, a conclusion of law on page 18 regarding road states, "The road infrastructure does not include a through-connection between Ringo Drive and Sadie Court. With the denial of the variance recus, one would be required, leading to a fundamental redesign of the road network, which may have potential negative impacts that have not been reviewed. I question whether these are truly conclusions of law, and to what extent the changes proposed between the 17-lot, 2.5-acre farm common area and the 16-lot, 3.0-acre plat would require review as a new subdivision." A conclusion of law for the planned variation denial is that the residual open space accumulated through the planned variation proposal to reduce lot sizes will not provide recreational or outdoor living areas to the residents within the development. What is left out of that conclusion, and Casey did read that, is it goes on to say, "And for preserving large trees, tree groves, pond streams, natural drainage areas, rock-out crops, native plant life, and wildlife cover. Surely creating a working farm preserving agricultural soils and use would be consistent with this requirement." So to reiterate, our primary goal is to mitigate for impacts on agriculture and preserve existing prime agricultural soils, in conjunction with the use of an irrigation ditch, who I've talked with Ray Tip of the Missoula Irrigation District about, and that what he said is a minimum of 28.3 acre-feet were available per season, and that the existing barn would serve the purpose of the working farm. This slide shows existing farmland, barn, and irrigation ditch. So again, this is a 16-lot plat presented today, which has six lots that were less than one acre, or 37%, being close to .8 acres, a three-acre farm common area, and four lots greater than three acres on the hillside. So from the neighborhood meeting today to today, as the plat has evolved, the farm common area has grown from 2.3 acres to three acres. The amount of one acre and greater lots has increased from four lots to 10 lots, and the density has been reduced from 17 lots to 16 lots. So in conclusion, we ask that the Board of Commissioners consider a balanced compromise approach and respectfully request that you consider asking staff to prepare findings of fact and conclusions of law to do the following: approval of the planned variation, approval of the variance not requiring a walkway along Ponderosa Lane, and no other agencies other than caps recommended a denial of this variance. However, Parks, Trails, and Open Lands recommended approval of it. Also, denial of the variance, allowing two adjacent cul-de-sacs without a through-connection. And to ask staff to create a conditional approval of the subdivision, the first condition being that a through-connection be made from the end of Ringo Drive to Humble Road. Thank you, and I'd be happy to have any questions.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. McCormick. Let's take some public comment. This is your opportunity to weigh in. I would ask, as I mentioned earlier, that you try to limit your comments to three minutes or less. Come on up to the mic, state your name for the record.
My name is Fred Stewart. I live at 4675 South Avenue West in Missoula. I have a three-acre U-PIC orchard about one-half mile north and west of this particular property. I'd like to read from comments that the Target Range Homeowners Association put together, and I'll hand you copies after I'm finished. The Target Range West End Rural Zoning District was formed and approved by the county commissioners in 2005, and there was a significant amount of community time and energy put into the zoning for the district, and the minimum lot size was an important feature, and it was put there on purpose, not as kind of a afterthought. And I would also want to mention that I met on two different occasions with the property owner, Dave Keck. He was very willing to sit down and talk about concerns that the neighborhood had. He was willing to meet for a third time, and it was in the middle of my harvest time, so I never had an opportunity to get together with him. But I did want to acknowledge that he was willing, and we were interested in talking with him about his proposal. The Target Range Neighborhood Plan was approved in 2010, and it was quite clear about trying to protect what they were, what we had identified as resources at risk, and to be able to use land use tools to protect those resources. The types of land use tools that were specified were using The types of land use tools that were specified were using open space bond money, and since that just passed, there may be some money available for that kind of thing, voluntary conservation easements, deed restrictions, the things that could protect the resources that are identified as at risk. And the resources that were identified at risk have been addressed to some extent already. Resources are the aquifer and the water quality, surface waters, ag soils, open space, natural vegetation, view sheds, wildlife habitat, for example. And all of these resources play an important role in the rural character that 99%, literally 99% of the residents of the neighborhood described as very or somewhat important to preserve. And even with the changes that Mr. McCormick mentioned, I think that our comments would still be valid, that as presented, the McCauley Meadows subdivision does not achieve the direction presented in the Target Range Neighborhood Plan specifically. The minimum lot size does not meet current zoning on some of the parcels, and we feel that applying conservation design methods would protect a greater amount of prime ag soils, and at least we feel 50% of all prime ag soils should be protected for ag use in perpetuity. There's a lack of protection for at-risk resources identified in the neighborhood plan. The ag parcel, we feel, should be sold as a separate parcel to a single owner at ag value, rather than considered a common area owned by homeowners in the subdivision. It seems that would be an easy solution to questions about what would happen if it were part of a community-owned parcel. There's a lack of protection for the steep slopes and open space cornerstone. No build protection should be applied to all the slopes on McCauley Butte. Finally, we'd like to see a cost comparison of a two-stage group septic treatment on level portions of the property, rather than pumping all the septic up on McCauley Butte, which is open space in the comprehensive plan. Pumping septic as proposed puts water quality resources at risk with any equipment failure, and that was mentioned in the staff report. Thank you very much for the opportunity to present, and I'd answer questions later if you have any. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. Come on up.
For the record, my name is Brett Colina. I live at 4850 Humble Road, which is just a few properties to the west of this proposed development. I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak this afternoon, and I do so not only as an adjacent neighbor, but also as a local home builder and a real estate developer. In 2007, I was also one of the grantors of the McCauley Butte Conservation Easements that permanently protected the 280 acres of land directly to the south of this property and encompassed most of McCauley Butte and about one and a half miles of frontage along the Bitterroot. I wholeheartedly agree with the recommended denials given in the staff report, and I believe that the unanimous denial from the Planning Board speaks volumes about the many serious problems with this poorly conceived proposal. The north slope of McCauley Butte is not an appropriate place to build homes, nor is it an appropriate place to have a neighborhood sewer system. Not only are these hillsides steep and rocky, they are a very visible part of the protected landmark that is one of the cornerstones of Missoula's open space and conservation lands. Although we signed the McCauley Butte Conservation Easements with Five Alleys Land Trust in 2007, the desire to protect these hillsides from development dates back decades. McCauley Butte was first identified as open space in the Fort Missoula Plan, going back to the 70s, and then again in the Plan of 1993. Unfortunately, this proposal not only disregards the adjacent open space and protected status of McCauley Butte, but the developers propose to cut home sites and roads into the hillside that will forever scar this important view shed valued by the residents of Target Range and Orchard Homes neighborhoods. In the summer, the proposed sewer drain fields would appear as irrigated green runways on the Buttes brown, grassy hillsides. And in the winter, the access roads and driveways cut into the hillside will stand stark and black against the snow-covered slopes. There are other options. This property has plenty of usable flat ground that is well-suited for home sites, all of which could be developed and still comply with the Target Range West End Rural Zoning District. The residents of Target Range have spoken loudly and clearly about the rural character and density that are appropriate for this neighborhood. So if a developer is going to ask for your permission to ignore these rules, then there should be an overwhelming benefit to the neighbors who are negatively affected by your decision. Unfortunately, this proposal gives less than nothing. It takes away valuable open space and replaces it with hillside houses, paved roads, and a multifamily sewer system, all of which are proposed to be built on steep, rocky slopes at over 25% in grade. And I want to go off script quickly here. I fully don't understand how the DEQ originally denied their request for a waiver. Well, I understand why they did it, because you don't pump a neighborhood worth of septic up onto a steep, rocky hillside. So DEQ denies their request for a waiver, and I dug through the 300 pages of applications, and all I could really see is that they went back with more data and said, "We'll build it perfectly and monitor it forever." Okay, so then they get their variance. And that's, why have rules if that's all it takes to say, "No, it's going to be perfect and it's never going to fail"? That doesn't seem reasonable, especially because if it does fail, it's going to contaminate, in DEQ's words, "downgradient wells." My drinking water is one of those downgradient wells. So that, to me, the risk is not worth it. And I also want to quickly mention the irrigation ditch. That, we take water out of that, but when we first moved there in 2004, there was almost no water at the down-end part of that irrigation ditch. My hayfield, I pay $1,300 a year on my tax bill for irrigation water. When I spoke to Ray Tipp, I said, "There's no water. Why do I have to pay this?" He says, "Everyone pays it. Figure out a way to get water." So we did grants, worked with the irrigation district, and had the portion of that irrigation ditch where it leads to the Keck's property lined. They rebuilt it with cement, and now we have adequate flow. But it is not enough to supply water for this neighborhood, especially, I didn't even quite understand the fact that not all the homes are going to be able to irrigate their lawns from well water. That's, how do you even enforce that? And I will tell you, when we rebuilt that irrigation ditch, if you went out there, the water literally disappeared under the Butte. That is a pile of this crazy red rock, but you could stand there and see the water just dive down into the ground and hear it, and the guy that had run the ditch, the ditch rider, whose dad was the ditch rider, said, "Oh yeah, the water's disappeared down there forever." So the septic system for this development belongs on the flat ground, because you put it up on the rocky hillside, you don't know where it's going to go.
Could you wrap up?
I will wrap it up. All we ask, and I'm going to go very quickly on this, this farming component is very discouraging because it is pitting open space against farming. And what they have proposed, they do put pictures of flowers and farms up there, but there's nothing permanent in writing. This is a lot that if you can get the whole neighborhood to agree on who to lease it to, and you can find a farmer, it might become a farm. But historically, this is not a farm, and this property should not be held up as, "Oh my gosh, this is where Missoula's food is going to come from." This is another lot that may or may not become a usable farm, and I will very quickly tell you this. My neighbor has a three acre farm with a 10-foot deer fence, a two-inch water line, and a house with it, and he tried to go out and find someone to farm it for free and couldn't find someone to be successful with it. So this idea that you're going to find someone to come in there, complement a neighborhood, and run a farm in there is fictional, and there's no protections, there's nothing in writing, there's no easements, there's no deed restrictions. This plan is not fully vetted, and they've kind of come to you and said, "Well, let's tweak it a little bit and maybe it will work." And I'm telling you, it is not going to work, and you should save the developers from themselves. They are devaluing the lots that would be on the flat ground by ruining the open space, and they are setting themselves up for neighborhood fights on, "What do we do with the weed patch that's supposed to be this flower garden in the middle of the neighborhood?" So thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Colina. And I'd remind folks, please keep your comments to three minutes or less. That was running a little bit long, although we appreciate the sentiments.
My name is Leslie Della Piazza, and I live at 2925 Humble Road. I will only address maybe things that haven't been addressed by others, and I, you know, my husband and I bought that lot 18 months ago, or maybe close to two years ago, and then built a house on it, and it's the last lot in the Schwenk subdivision. And so I, I don't, you know, I wanted to move out to Target Range and build a house, just like everybody else wants to move out to Target Range and build a house, and we paid dearly for that lot, for the opportunity to do so. So I like protecting the one acre value. I would have flexibility for slight decreases from that if we could protect McCauley Butte, and also if there could be an actual county road through that property that connects Ringo to Humble with proper sidewalk on the east side of Humble and sidewalks through that subdivision, because what we didn't realize when we bought that lot and built our house was that there's a lot more traffic on Humble than you think there would be. I mean, it's, it's sort of surprising. And lots of people have teenagers, and they drive fast, and we don't have sidewalks on Humble. And Humble doesn't feel very secure. There's lots of walkers with their dogs and their baby strollers and, you know, families of all ages, et cetera. And moving an additional subdivision in is going to make that road less safe for all of those people who currently use it. So I would like to see some enhancements to the public safety aspect of it. I, I don't know what it takes to make a subdivision viable in Target Range. I, I would have to agree that, you know, the 10 acres on the flat seem like there's a prime opportunity to have really premium-priced lots that people are going to build lovely homes on and do landscaping and such that are in keeping with the neighborhood values. And from my perspective, I think we should quit calling it a farm because it's a, it's only really the size to be a garden, and if it is a garden and there's no parking on either side of that road that runs through that subdivision, then all of the cars that might use that or might be associated with that endeavor are going to have to park on Humble. Including anybody that comes to a party at one of those homes is going to have to park on Humble, which is going to make that road, once again, less safe for all of the people who currently use it, not only as a roadway but as a walkway. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Dave Loomis. I live at 8155 Misser Court out in the Target Range area. I'm going to take the opportunity, if I may, that I read the staff report. You have a very thorough and precise review of this project and certainly good reason to deny this. Two important points: I feel that it does not meet the intent and the letter of the West End Zoning District, the Rural Zoning District, and it doesn't meet the intent also, of course, of the neighborhood plan already approved by your commission. Would I like to take one minute, if I may, and it has to do with your subdivision process? And I think this is an issue that has been here forever in the county. I know you Commissioners understand that, is that there's a lot of money spent early on surveying precisely everything and then arguing about it for months and months and months. If possible, I don't know precisely on the state law part, but certainly your county, our county, can get together with CAPS and discuss a process, a sketch plan process, with all the players and all the players without spending lots and lots of money on expensive engineers to go through the possibilities. Like this subdivision had a lot of potential for a couple of different things. One, saving the McCauley Butte, the hillside themselves, or maybe number two, and maybe in addition to, a potential agricultural parcel of appropriate size. And we're way down the road now, spending lots and lots of money. You know, I feel sorry for the applicants. We've seen this happen a long time. I would strongly recommend you not get into the weeds, especially on this subdivision. These weeds are way too high to get through, and you have a clear thing in front of you about denial, and I recommend you do that today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Loomis. Additional public comment? Don't be shy.
Good afternoon. My name is Kathy Schwenk. I work, I live at 3111 Humble Road. My husband and I own a small portion of the McCauley Butte directly across from our home. I think we have about two acres, which would be adjacent to this new subdivision. I want to compliment Casey and his staff for all of the work that they did on what I believe is a very comprehensive report, not disrespecting Mr. McCormick, but I would hope that you would take into consideration his comment that he's never had a subdivision except once or twice be denied. I hope that would not alter your opinion. I hope we just look at the facts today. The McCauley Butte needs to be maintained how it looks. I would hate to be a county commissioner that would be held responsible for, at some point in the future, having voted to have that parcel of land destroyed. I laugh at the pictures that were taken from South Avenue looking at the hill, that homes up on that hill would not have any impact. I do not believe that you can put that paved road in to accommodate the homes on the hill and, and as well as the drain fields up there without ruining that hill. I have lived there for 35 years. My husband's lived there for all but one year of his 65 years of life, and that McCauley Butte is part of, not just the Target Range and the Orchard Homes, but that is part of the Missoula County as a whole. And I strongly agree with denial of all of the variances and the denial of the subdivision, and I hope you will take into account all of the facts that were presented to you. And thank you for listening. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Schwenk.
Good afternoon. My name's Webb Harrington. I live at 4563 Schwenk Court, very right across the street from this proposed subdivision. After reviewing the existing plan and the site plan today that is updated for McCauley Meadows subdivisions, my husband and I strongly urge you to deny this subdivision. We concur with the majority of concerns that your staff, the Missoula County Planning Staff, brought forth in their review of this proposed subdivision. The topography on McCauley Butte does not support the density requested. The plan itself is not well thought out or designed to accommodate the number of lots that they propose. Building on the hillside McCauley Butte should not be allowed, and adherence to the one acre lot size should be enforced. I know you're in a difficult situation with a successful developer and planning person that spoke very well today. The plan itself does not, he went on and on about the two acres that they might have a farm. I don't think that that's really logistically feasible. I think it would be a big weed patch. The parking wouldn't be there, the irrigation water would not be there. They don't have the water things figured out. I think they're trying to jam too many lots into a very small space, and they're trying to put lots on a view shed that shouldn't be built on. So there's, although, you know, there's potential for a very nice subdivision. I agree with some people that have already spoken, that they need to redesign it, they need to have fewer lots, they need to be on the flat ground. They can't have a sewer system on the hillside. That's not even responsible planning. Thanks for listening.
Thank you, Ms. Harrington. Additional comment? Surely there's someone, ah, okay, we've got someone coming now. Yeah, the tip's bendable.
Yeah, it did. My name is Peggy Morrison. I live at 4415 South Avenue West. I own property that goes from South Avenue down to Sundown, so I'm very much a- So I'm very much a contiguous landowner with this subdivision. I'm also the president of the Target Range, Target Range Homeowners Association, not to be confused with the homeowners association that is proposed in this, for this subdivision. We're totally different. I agree with what has been said. I'd like to also add one thought. If we have seventeen new wells drawing water out of our aquifer, what effect will that have on the wells, on the adjacent wells? I know that I've been reading about, not specifically in Missoula but around the state, that as subdivisions go in, the aquifer goes down and people that had their wells, say, at eighty feet, were now having to drill down to a hundred feet. So I, I would like to, at some point perhaps, see a projection of these seventeen new wells. Thank you and good luck.
Thank you, Ms. Morrison. Anyone else want to comment on the proposal before us? Going once, going twice. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing and I will open it up for questions by the commission. Or discussion on the part of the commission. I guess I'll, I'll break the ice a little in that I'm, I'm very hesitant to re-engineer subdivisions on the fly. And while I think it's entirely appropriate to, for the governing body to propose possible conditions or modifications to mitigate impacts, at this point in the process, I would caution us on going down the path of, of major re-engineering, which really ought to trigger another round of public input because frankly, I have not even seen and had a chance to look in detail at the plat that was provided to us today, which is very, or at least somewhat different than what was in the submittal packet. Commissioner Rowley, it looks like you're reaching for the microphone.
I concur. I really appreciated Niva's comment from Planning Board about not appreciating something being brought to you with the expectation that, that we would fiddle with it and get it to where it needs to be for approval. And especially considering, I think, if there were a few changes made. But if the changes aren't substantial, I don't see how they're going to be good enough to change denial of this project. And if they are substantial, then they need to go back through the process. I have never seen a unanimous denial by Planning Board. And the applicants did make a few changes after that, but did not address the myriad of problems that were addressed in the staff report. So I feel like there's not a lot to discuss, even at this point. I don't feel that the applicants met standards for approval.
Thank you. I do have a question, perhaps for our attorney, John Hart here. So first off, Casey, would you mind coming back up and queuing up the, the motions? And I think Mr. Loomis made some real salient comments earlier in terms of, I certainly share the frustration of, by state law, the governing body being at the very tail end of the process. And, and it's at this juncture that we have, have input and can provide any feedback on where things might have left the rails. So I, I totally feel the, the pain of the applicant, so to speak, that we're at this stage. And if there was any sense of being blindsided by the, the recommendations in the staff report, that's, that is unfortunate. There should never be the expectation that anything that comes forward is automatically going to be approved, certainly. But I would certainly also hope that folks would have some sense that things are going awry. John, my question for you is, in terms of the options before us of approval, denial, conditioning it, is there any, is there any ability to send it back to an earlier, or I guess the other option was a continuation, which may or may not be granted by the applicant? Is there any ability to send the proposal back to an earlier stage in the process, short of denying it and starting over from scratch?
There is an option, Commissioner. And, and it would involve the, the plat that was presented to the commission and to the public just today by the developer. If you determine that this new plat is new information, and I would advise you that it is new information, it's new information that the public has not had an opportunity to review and, and has not had an opportunity to comment on. Now, some of the people here in the room, you might be able to argue, have been able to review this and comment on it. But people that didn't come to this meeting certainly didn't have the opportunity to see this and comment on it. And so that would be, that would, that would be a violation of the subdivision and platting act. It would also arguably be a violation of our Montana Constitution, which requires people to have the opportunity to review all the information that you, as a governing body, have in making your decision. So one of the options that you would have today, considering this, this new information, is to deem this, you know, a significant modification to the subdivision proposal that needs to go back to the Planning Board for consideration.
But it would be sending back to the Planning Board by way of new information, the plat that was presented to us today, not some other alternative. And the reason I say that is, I'm not sure, again, seeing it on the fly and just taking a cursory look at it, that it would mitigate significantly the impacts that staff, by way of its report or discussion here today, or that, that Planning Board really entertained. That would be something else. But if, if the option is that it's either send this version of the plat back today or deny it, then that limits our options.
Pretty much.
Correct.
Those are, those are your two options.
And I guess for me, some of the impacts that I, I think need to be more adequately mitigated, which I, again, based on a cursory look at the plat that was provided today, include getting development, to the extent possible, off of the slopes of the Butte, getting the drain field off of the, the Butte itself, more adequately mitigating for agricultural lands, and certainly the connectivity issue. I have not been convinced that the, the cul-de-sac arrangement is, is workable or desirable. And then I guess also, I'll throw in that the pedestrian facilities, I think, need to be more adequately provided than what we've seen. And again, I'm assuming that the plat just provided to us probably does not address all of those. Commissioner Curtis, are you chomping at the bit there?
Oh, I have a hackamore. You know, I, I appreciate that, some of you probably know that I've seen a subdivision proposed on this property before, that also didn't get approved. So I appreciate trying to figure out ways to save property for ag in the community. But I think you also have to recognize the community values and, I forget which one of you misses, might have been Ms. Harrington, said, you know, you would have to recognize that that McCauley Butte is not just important to the people, look at it up close every day, but it's a recognized community value that we were all excited about when it was conserved with a voluntary conservation easement. So I think one option for these folks might be that we, you know, the voters just passed another open space bond, so maybe you can show, you know, get some value of that. I see a lot of issues with this subdivision, however. When I first looked at the map, even as the one presented today or the one before, when you see two cul-de-sacs coming together with a trail between, I just went, what is that? I mean, it's just silly. Casey, could you pull up again, kind of that map that shows the connectivity or lack thereof in, in the area? I mean, for years, we've talked about the Target Range area needing some more east-west connections especially. But you, you just look at it and you can see, I mean, I don't think it should look like downtown. We don't need to have cross streets every block, but we need to have some cross streets and, and to have people have to drive in from two directions makes no sense. Pedestrian facilities, we all know that as soon as the trail went along South Avenue some years ago, there were people on it. As soon as the trail went out in Tura, there were people on it. As soon as the trail went through, along Sealy Lake, along the highway, there were people on it. We need to put pedestrian crosswalks wherever we can, pedestrian facilities. I think the water calculations are really iffy. And there's not any way to say if I have a well and a spigot outside my house, that I'm not going to use a sprinkler. I mean, who's going to be the water police? It's going to be DEQ. And the whole combined appropriations is a, is a new thing in our state. But I think that it has good justification for why it's needed, so that we aren't putting in a subdivision and twenty wells or seventeen wells that now impact the neighbors. DEQ's calculations for, for that community system and even putting a septic on the hill is questionable to me. The replacement system looks to me like it's on a private lot. One of them says utility lot. The other one had a number, so, you know, and saying that it, they're spreading it out between four drain fields to reduce the chances of failure, well, let's not put it there then. I think everyone knows that some stuff flows downhill and we don't want to be below it. The drainage calculations seem to me like they need more work too. And I'm, I'm not a person that does that stuff. I thought the, the common area, calling it a common area, calling it preserving ag, saying it could be sold, that's just really confusing. So that needs to be worked out. And saving a dollar to pass on the cost to future owners. The county used to do a lot of waivers and saying that, well, waive building a trail or a pathway or whatever in this subdivision and we can do an RSID later and you won't get to, you know, you'll basically waive your right to protest that. Well, when you start thinking about it though, you're just passing that on to somebody else. And as was said, lots in Missoula County are not cheap. And if somebody builds a lot and buys a house and you go to the bank and you know you can make that payment, but if some, then an RSID gets added on later, maybe that twenty or forty dollars pushes you right over the edge of, out of your ability to afford a place. So I don't, I don't think that's a good thing. So this, I, I think it just has to, I think it's just rushed. It's a poor plan. It needs, it needs connectivity of roads. It needs connectivity of pedestrian facilities. It needs to recognize that when you live next to the most recognizable Butte in the valley, the neighborhood doesn't want houses, doesn't want houses on it. I would not be against saying that a lot could be point eight acres, if there was a trade-off for something, or if it makes sense. I mean, when, you know, I was the, one of the commissioners that was here when we had adopted that plan and I, Fred and I have had this conversation more than once, but, you know, there, there were houses in that district that were non-conforming the day that it was adopted. And I also said, someday you might regret this because it doesn't promote clustering, conservation, development, whatever you want to call it, which can provide some ways to save ag. So I wouldn't be against that if it gave up some other things. If you want to get something, you got to give it up. I grew up on a farm and I knew that if I wanted to go somewhere, if I milked the cows first before I asked, I was more apt to get to go. So I just don't see that they're giving up anything to get these variance requests. So I think that it, I mean, we either deny it or we give you more time so you can design it to, to address the issues that we've talked about. I'm concerned too, that there's quite a few crossings shown of that ditch. And while the ditch has been lined and, you know, it, it's not as apt to leak and those kinds of things, the more things you put over a ditch, the more things there are to have branches and leaves and stuff catch. And pretty soon the water's going somewhere else. So I just don't think it was, it's a well thought through project.
Okay, thank you. Casey, could you queue up the motions again, please? Commissioner Rowley?
I guess, yeah, I would just, I would agree. I'm all, I'm all for planned variations and doing things creatively to do with the land, what we can. But this, this subdivision did turn out to be really ill conceived, I think. And one thing that really strikes me that would need a lot of work before we look at it again, is the, the irrigation plan or lack thereof. I think what's proposed is, is relatively preposterous at this point. And I just wanted to point out as well for the future, that I don't appreciate the significant omission of facts and context around the pedestrian facilities that were presented by the applicant. There was significant omission of fact in what was presented. And thank you, Casey, for bringing the actual full context of what was suggested by Garrick.
And just, just a minute, Mr. McCormick. John, Mr. Hart. So again, just thinking of the array of options and, and I'm inclined, this probably isn't a good idea what I'm suggesting, but a continuation, an extension, if you will, would merely provide time to bring something back to this body. It would not be a continuation to start the process at some earlier stage. Is that? What would happen? What would happen in a continuation scenario?
Well, we have time, we have time deadlines. We have the sixty-day review deadline, which is, Casey pointed out, I, I think runs on the fifteenth of the month. The new information process that I talked about earlier does suspend that sixty-day time period from running and, and gives you a significant more time to hear. But again, that would have to go back to the, or I would recommend that it goes back to at least the Planning Board stage.
And again, the new information would be what was presented to us today, not necessarily our, our recommendations as far as how this could be fixed.
It would definitely include the new information that the developer provided today in the form of the plat. But it could, it, consideration of all the discussion, all the public comment that, that came from this hearing today could also be considered by the, the developer in, in bringing information back to the planning stage and then ultimately the Planning Board and then this body again.
Okay. Commissioner Rowley?
So they could essentially make us something different than what we have today that's new, something different and new, and bring it back to the Planning Board. Because essentially, I guess what I'm asking is, like, I don't want to see this again unless it has gone through the Planning Board. I'm not comfortable with a unanimous denial by Planning Board without substantial changes. And again, substantial changes would trigger it having to go back, so.
Let's, let's hear from Tim Warley.
Yeah, and I haven't forgot you, Dale.
Tim's, Tim's a walking encyclopedia of the subdivision regs too, so.
Well, I think it also could be argued that this is an amended application. I think we've talked
we've talked about that as well, and it probably would be appropriate to take this and send it back at least as far as planning board if there's a willingness to entertain this update that you saw today.
So I'll just say, I'm not particularly interested in entertaining the version that we saw today unless that version is significantly amended and overhauled. Tim, could you describe for us, or Casey for that matter, are there significant elements of review that would be missed if we simply sent a completely re-engineered subdivision to the planning board? Presumably, a lot of work and review goes into these things before that point.
Yes, an amended application is, per the way the subdivision regulations read, would be submitted to the planning office at that point, and that amended application would be submitted to us sometime after it was determined sufficient on August 17th and before you reach your decision. If we receive something that has material differences or an amended application is received, the review period suspended. There's then some flexibility on behalf of planning staff to use that suspended time period to make a determination of at what point in the process does this need to return to based on the extent of those changes. So if we just look at the plat that was submitted today, if that is the amended application, like he's just taking that, tacking it on to what's already been provided to us, because I'm not seeing any additional binders or anything coming up at us, then we, that's what we'd be considering. It would be considered material based on our definition of what a material change is in there, in which case then we would send that plat attached to the original application back at least to planning board and likely even a sufficiency review for agency comment, in my opinion, would be fairly important as well, especially if we're making changes to lot sizes or roads or anything like that to give parks, trails, public works, and other entities a chance to review.
I just had a question. Is there, it seems to me like things that we've identified that are kind of out of whack are not really just an amended, I mean, I, I'm just trying to figure out, does it make sense for us to say, extend this out, go amend it, bring it back, and it's going to go through a long process, or do we just deny it and say, do it all? I mean, I guess, does amended process mean we could save them $7,000 or whatever it costs now?
You know, I don't know right offhand what.
Is there a process, is there a cost for an amended?
Yeah, I don't think there's one.
Yeah, I don't believe there's a fee for an amended application, so if it got sent back and went through agency review and planning board and presumably commissioner review, I don't think we would have to, I don't think there's actually any charge for that.
Although clearly, there's going to be a significant staff time, potentially to the same order of magnitude of review that you've already.
Right, it's going to be different, hopefully.
Yeah, the only thing I would like to mention, though, as well, is that the amended app is something established in subdivision regulations, whereas we also have a zoning action in front of us as well with the planned variation. And the provisions for amended app in the subdivision regulations don't necessarily apply to the zoning regulations. So we have two, two major actions with the two variance requests on the side, kind of, and the two major actions are in two different books of regulations. So just to throw one more thing in the mix here, we should probably.
Could I ask one more question?
Sure, go ahead.
So, just, you know, I was reading through and weighing the variance requests, and to me, some of them were not really a hardship or it's a hardship that created themselves. If there was only the one lot on the hill that had, where the existing house is, is that considered a driveway and they wouldn't need to have a sidewalk?
That's correct. If the driveway that was like there existing today just stayed, yeah, if it was just a driveway, then it wouldn't.
Okay, I just wondered about that.
The pedestrian access to each of the lots could be provided, and it would be provided at the closest road or right-of-way, essentially, so Humble Road in that case.
Cola, did you have something?
Yeah. I guess I, I had a thought, I mean, it just kind of would have hearing and what our concerns are with it. I mean, it, it sounds like we want a complete redesign, and in that, if that is the case, maybe the simplest path forward is a denial, or it is, do you feel, I don't know the specifics about an amended enough to really feel if, maybe John can tell, is that appropriate? Or really, if we, it sounds like we want a redesign, is that a denial?
Mr. Hart.
I don't, I'm not familiar with, as familiar, obviously, as the planning department and staff is with the amended application process. But, and I can't read your minds either, although I'm somewhat astute, I, yeah, I'm getting, I'm getting the idea that, yeah, as presented this, you want to deny this subdivision, and obviously, that's one of your options today, but there are other options, too, that Casey and Tim have talked about.
I guess the staff has, have a recommendation of really what would be the most appropriate path forward?
Recognizing that what I think you're probably hearing is, in response to staff's findings of facts and conclusions of law, that there are significant issues, and whatever re-engineering of this happens needs to include public and agency input. So I guess, in light of that, what is the cleanest path forward?
I think maybe what I'd like to do is confer with John quickly. I do have some questions, and maybe we can arrive at a conclusion and put that on the record, but in the meantime, you may want to hear from Dale or Alan McCormick or anybody else from the development team.
Dale, why don't you come up first, and then we'd like to take a five-minute recess.
For the record, Dale McCormick with PCI. So I guess the main thing that I wanted to just communicate is I understand that you don't like what's in front of you. There are a lot of things that I could rebut that Casey said that isn't really appropriate, but the one thing that, that really is troublesome to me is that I feel like there has been an assertion from, from some people, not all, that somehow this was a insincere effort to create a working farm, and that's far from the truth, which is why we didn't need to, actually, the beginning of this process, you know, is kind of like a conversation between me and the client about, do you even want to put yourself out there because there's a lot of risk associated with that? And I congratulate him for at least being willing to go down this path, even if it's unsuccessful. And similarly with Garden City Harvest and CFAC, rather than just running from them and, and, you know, knowing that they wouldn't like maybe our solution, we tried to work with them and to look at them as inspiration, and they're organizations that do great work. And I've, Gene, you know I've commented on ag rules when they were before the public before, and I feel like finding someplace where we can look at something and say, that's, that's a good model for how you can be successful at combining agriculture and development. And so, we may have missed the mark, but the intention was there, it was sincere, and I hope you realize that. Thank you.
Thank you. And certainly, I don't think the commission is, I'll speak for myself, I did not think that you were insincere or, or not going after, I think, totally laudable goals. I think the examples you've shown of other communities and the degree of outreach that you did to our ag community is totally on point. There's much more, I think, at stake here in terms of issues with this particular design than just ag land, and I, I hope that came out clear also, and I think that it just missed the mark on multiple fronts.
Right, I'd just like to add, that's why I said I applaud you for doing that piece. I think there's some tweaking needs to happen to keep that preserved there. I mean, it was just, you just wondered if it became sold, what could really happen, so maybe it needs de restrictions, but no, I think it's a great goal.
So we're going to go ahead and first take a five-minute recess. Let's reconvene at 4:25. We'll be in recess. We'll be in recess. Mr. Worley, did, do you have something you wanted to share?
John and I conferred a little bit, and it may be a little legally cleaner to, to consider this amended application and send it back to agency review and planning board, but there's a question as to whether the, the development team really has an interest in doing that. I think that is a, a very real question, whether much is to be gained by doing that. I, I don't think I've ever really come to this crossroad before where there's a question of do we send it back or do we not send it back? Usually, an amended application is called that and that's where things end. And that's what actually happened with Riley Acres in 2012. There was a significantly, and I have some slides if you're interested in seeing those, there was a significantly amended application. We call it that and gave them an opportunity to resubmit, but they essentially had to start over at that point.
Okay, thank you. And I'm not sure I have any real desire to send back what we, we're provided today. Okay, are we ready for motions? Dale, do you have anything else you want to add? And what might your preference be amended or, or vote this up or down today?
Dave could not make it. Tammy was here and left during the meeting, so neither of the developers are present. There would need to be an extension granted in order to do the amended application thing. So I guess I don't, I don't, without the consent of the applicant, I don't want to make that decision for him. But I guess the reality is that an extension would be required to, to move it forward in some fashion. So.
So would you like to have until the 15th for your client to send us a letter one way or the other?
Yeah, I think that would be a good way to go.
Okay, so we could recess the hearing contingent or?
Continue the hearing till the 15th?
Yeah, do we?
Casey, whoa.
I was just going to say, there's, there's not a scheduled hearing on the 15th.
Right.
That's just the 60-day deadline.
Does the granting of an extension or not granting an extension require a public hearing?
No.
I don't believe so. Would it?
No.
It's just a decision that would be.
As I see it, that would be necessary if we were to submit an amended application, right? We'd need to grant some sort of extension.
Tim, come on up. Help us out here.
Technically, there's a suspension of the review period with the determination of material changes and an amended application.
Commissioner Rowley. So I guess where does that, Tim, come on up, back up to the mic if you could. So, so where does that leave us here? If, if time is needed in order for Dale to confer with the, the applicant as to whether or not to grant an extension, what next?
But what you're saying is, if we're considering that what's come even today is amended, then the timeline changes.
Right, you can suspend the 60-day time period at that point. Another possibility, and I don't, I don't know, Casey, is there a November 29th hearing date? It might be safer if Dale was willing to, to extend to that date. I don't know, do we have much scheduled? Emmy, Casey, do we know on the 29th?
I think it was just the Alexandra Phasing Plan Extension.
Okay. That might be a little cleaner if Dale might be willing to do that. It, it just brings it back to a, to a hearing date. And then Dave Kett could write a letter in the interim.
And then at that juncture, we would still be back to a decision point as to whether or not to deny or go down the path of an extension.
Yeah.
Even if they, regardless of whether they grant it, I guess, even if they grant it, we can still, at that point, make a decision.
Yes, I believe you could do that.
So we're considering just the material we received today as requiring an amendment, but if they want to go forward with a, to address the many things that we brought up today, it would be even bigger amended. So I guess if they decide they don't want to go down that route, then we can deny. I don't, I'm trying to figure out.
Yeah, I guess, I guess that's my, my question is, I would, I would want to see some willingness or evidence that during an extension period, the full breadth of our concerns will be addressed in a more adequate amended submittal, not just this plat that was provided us today.
I think it's important for us to probably say on the record that the staff report and the findings of fact, conclusions of law, that we agree with them, that's, you know, part of our background before, we didn't say that really out loud today, but that's what, at least I believe that, or I agree with the conclusions that staff made in regard to some of these variances. Like I said, I think a case could be made for the variance to the zoning if there were some other trade-offs.
And I guess an option still before us, before we adjourn today, will be, we could vote this up or down. Any preference on the part of the commission?
It sounds like, yeah, go ahead. We, we don't know if the applicant is interested in amending the application and submitting something essentially very different. So if we continue till the 29th, ask them to come and give us that information. If they want to essentially start over, if we deny it, they'd have to start over. It's just cheaper to do it if we don't deny it? Is that the difference? Like, how'd you guys arrive at the, this'll take forever. Why'd you decide it was cleaner to do an extension than to just deny it and?
I just want to, Alan, for a moment.
Sure, go, go ahead. We'll forgive you for whispering. Should we just?
I mean, with an amended, they don't have to start at the beginning.
Yeah, that, that's how I look at it. I mean, there's the one, there's the cost issue, but then they perhaps don't have to start at the beginning.
What's, I guess my concern is, what's the beginning and when does staff develop all, I mean, there are 260 findings and, I mean, it, they're going to have to redevelop all of those with an essentially new proposal. And is that the begin, I just, I guess I don't see what we're doing here and it shouldn't be this hard.
Casey or John, anything? Because, yeah, I, I agree entirely.
I would just add that we would need a full application to review on. The plat that was submitted today obviously has contrary information to what's actually in the application itself. You know, it talks about lot numbers and lot sizes and things throughout, and that plat changes that in some regard, so we're left looking at a plat that's different than the kind of background and supporting information. So in order for them to, to really resubmit something with some strength to it, I guess it would be good to see some of that.
Dale, you have?
I guess we'd like to continue to the, was it 29th?
Yes.
But between now and then, if, after conferring with Dave and Tammy, if they want to withdraw the application or just not do it, like I said, in the absence of having communications from the developer, I can't totally make that decision, but I don't, I guess I don't want to give the impression that if we continue to the 29th, that we'll necessarily have a whole new design by that time.
Oh, no. We don't expect that.
No, we just need some sense of what the intent of the property owner is.
Right. So that would be our preference and that will, and if, if that, after conferring with the owner, we can make that decision sooner, then, then we can do that too.
Okay.
And I would move that we recess this hearing and reconvene on the 29th at our regular scheduled meeting.
Second.
One favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we will take this up again on the 29th. Is there any other business to come before the commission today? Seeing none, we'll be adjourned.